I'm unmuting.
So we are recording, but we haven't started the meeting.
That is correct. We're just waiting for all the commissioners to show up and then we'll begin in a moment.
Who are we missing? We're missing Anthony. Okay.
I just let him in. He should connect to audio in a moment.
Can I start by saying just a couple of things?
Go for it.
Waiting for Anthony to be on. Is he on? All right. Hi, Anthony.
Hey, how's it going?
Good. I just wanted to say a couple of things before we start. The first one is next month at the planning commission meeting, we are going to have, we're going to bring back the new zoning ordinance. So before then, if you have any questions or anything, and we have a couple of things we're still working out, but I just wanted you to be aware of that, that that will be an action item at the next meeting. And then I want to thank Dash, who's last night with you guys is tonight for doing such a great job, not only running this meeting and Zoom meeting, but organizing the process by which we, by which we get these meetings ready and run through them. You will be sorely missed. Dash, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Steve. What a, what a surprise. Thank you very much.
And I would like to introduce to you, is Angie Angelina? Or is Angie somebody else?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, so Angelina has been an intern with us and she's done a great job organizing the past meetings. She's going to take over Dash's responsibilities for zoning and historic. And Eric Ferraro is going to take over Dash's responsibility with you guys with the planning commission. And Eric was a, has been our zombie property. I don't remember his exact title, but he's done a great job with zombie enforcement and getting settlements with banks over the tune of $300,000 that's come to the city because of these, these enforcement actions. And the big more important thing is getting them, getting these banks to move to get rid of these properties. So welcome, Eric. Welcome, Angie. Good luck, Dash. And
Thank you.
All yours. I'm done. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Steve. I see we have a quorum. If not, no, I see all, all members present. So it's 6:03. I'll say the meeting is called to order. Take it away, Anthony.
Thank you. So our first order of business is just to vote to approve the January minutes, which Dash circulated. I believe it was either earlier this week or last week. So if I have a motion from one of the commissioners to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from the January meeting.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries five zero. And I'll move on to, we have a relatively short agenda this evening. We have four items on the consent agenda. And one item on the new business agenda for anybody, any members of the public who are unfamiliar with the process, the consent agenda, we typically vote on all together as one item. So we would just take a vote on all of those. I will give any members of the public who did show up to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda. The opportunity now just to raise your hand or otherwise indicate that you did come to comment on one of those items. And if you did, we can take it off of the consent agenda. We can move it over to new business. And we'll just vote on any others that are still on the consent agenda as one. So these are the four items at the head of the agenda, PLPC 2022, 10, 12, 13, and 14. The addresses are 528 Second Street, 469 Fifth Avenue, 77 Congress Street, and 184 River Street. So if any members of the public came to comment on any of those proposals, please make yourself known now by raising your hand on Zoom, or if you can unmute yourself and just say aye or.
Aye.
Okay. Are you, you're the applicant for one of those, correct? For 77 Congress?
Yes, I am.
So, I mean, you're, you're welcome to take it off the agenda and speak, but you know, we, we can also just vote on it. I'm, I'm looking specifically for people other than the applicant who came to speak about those, you know, to comment on the proposals. So it's, it's your call whether or not you'd want us to just vote on it on the consent agenda, or if you want an opportunity to speak on it.
Um, I'll speak on it if necessary. I'm never opposed to speaking on a project I have going on.
Sure. It isn't necessary. I'm just letting you know, if you do want it to be taken off the agenda, otherwise, you know, I think we can, we can move it through for a vote. But other than that, are there any other members of the public who came to speak on any of those four proposals? Okay, so I, in that case, I think we can just vote on the consent agenda collectively, all four items. So I will make a motion to vote on those four proposals, PLPC 2022, 10, 12, 13, and 14, just as one item, if we have a second.
Second.
Okay, moving to a vote. Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Sarah Wengert?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries. All four of those proposals are approved. So any, any of the applicants, Mr. Miller, anyone else who did come, those applications have been approved. And there's no further need for you to stick around. You're welcome to, but, but that portion of the agenda is finished.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to new business. So this is PLPC 2022, 11. Sorry, no. Yes, for 2022, 1147 Campbell Avenue. Do we have the applicant present?
Yes. Yep, we're here.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to you to present your application. I don't know if you need screen sharing to be able to show any materials or one of the city staff may be able to share their screen and put the application up if you'd rather they do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, I can share, if I can just click on share, I can share what we submitted. All right, so let me just bring something up here. Okay, um, my name is Derek Ribulis. I'm an architect for Coller Architecture. I'm here with Nick Regioni. He's the owner of the property. And I'm going to share my screen. So if you just talk a little bit. So can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the parcel is at 487 Campbell Ave. Nick, Mr. Regioni had gotten approval a few years back for the Dunkin' Donuts building that's there. So essentially, like, everything from here on over is already installed on the site and existing. And back when he got his approvals last time, he had proposed a phase two to the project, which is in this, this area here, which featured a pad site for a future commercial building. So we're back to get that, you know, to put that in front of the board for approval. So we're proposing, it's a three-story mixed-use building that has about a 4,000 square foot footprint and requires 28 parking spaces, which we have shown the proposed concept plan here. We are featuring a drive-through lane, which is all from the previous approvals. We didn't change anything except had to add a few more parking spaces because we have three stories of mixed use. The first floor is commercial. Then the upper two stories are apartments, and there's four apartments per floor. They're all one bedroom. And I can show you the elevation real quick. So you can see it's a traditional style building, you know, with storefront windows on the commercial level, residential-style windows on, on the apartment levels, and various awnings and roof lines that make it architecturally interesting. And you can see that the driveline in the front of the building will wrap around like such. And, you know, pretty standard building materials. We talked about siding, cultured stone, asphalt shingle roofing. And that's, that's a rear view of the building right there from the parking lot side. And you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered.
Okay, I will stop my share and then we'll turn it over to the board. Okay. I think it's done.
Thank you. So are there any members of the public who came to comment on this application? All right, I'm not seeing any hands. Are there any commissioner comments for the applicant or questions?
Could you go back to the plan view, the site plan? Sure.
Roddy, just before you jump into that, share, I, it looks like there may be some people still on the meeting from the consent agenda. Do you want to just restate that any, any of the other applications were approved and that's, that they're all set?
Sure, yeah. Thanks for reminding me. So just for anybody who might have joined late, if you did come to the meeting to speak about or hear about any of the items that were on the consent agenda, those were the four items at the top of the agenda. We already voted to approve all those applications. So we have already moved past that part of the agenda. We're now on the new business part of the agenda, 487 Campbell Avenue, and that is going to be the final item on our agenda. So if you were here to hear about any of those, they're already done. If you are one of the applicants, your application was already approved, and you don't have to stay here any longer.
So my comment was going to be that on the backside of these buildings, I think, is there, there's like a river creek. There's some body of water back there, isn't there? A little bit behind it.
Yeah, there's a creek. Let's see here. Let me zoom in on this. Here, right here.
Just knowing the area. I didn't know if there was any way to kind of engage that space or if it was too far away or.
Roddy, that, that slope back there is, is rather steep. There's no
Significant.
Yeah, there's no, in fact, in fact, part of the original approval was having them stay away from that slope and keeping development to Campbell Avenue.
Yeah.
Again, it's just worth stating that this, this out parcel was previously approved. It was approved as 3,000 square feet of, I think it was blank, commercial space. They didn't have a tenant at the time. So now the applicant has come back and they're, they're looking to program that space differently with a, with a, with a, is it all residential now, guys? All residential now, right?
No, some, some of the bottom's going to be commercial. And, you know,
All right.
Just so everyone's aware, we tried to market and it's still on the market. And, you know, we haven't had the best of luck to get someone, so we're just going to build it on spec. That's where we are now.
Okay. Um, I believe there's, is there a network of bike trails or just trails, hiking trails behind there too, Aaron?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's further to the east of this site. You're talking about the by Project Road, that area by the fire station.
Yeah.
There. I mean, they do come down this way, but there's no, there's no access from this section of Campbell. You have to go further east in order to kind of get down, get down.
All the trail network is north of the line and still there accessed from down below or up above, but it's not on the south side.
Okay. All right. I was just thinking about those couple of things in proximity to it. I'm going to take another peek at the site plan real quick. See if I have any other comments.
This is, oh, go ahead, Barb.
No, you go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. And Roddy, I know you're going to come back, but I thought I'd jump in. So my first concern, and I'm sorry I'm not on screen. My camera's terrible. But I think that it would, you know, understanding the residential component of this project, I think it would be really nice for the residents to be closer to the trees. I understand that, that reading could be an issue, the closer you get to the trees, but rather than situating the building in an island of asphalt, it might be nice to push the building back. Unless there are setback requirements that prevent that from happening. And to separate resident parking from the commercial parking, which doesn't seem to be apparent that you're doing that. So I think that site planning issue is a concern. Those trees are lovely, but other than that, there is no landscaping proposed. A rough stretch of Campbells, and I think it could be beautified by some landscaping. Excuse me. And architecturally, notice that the application suggests that the height of the building will be 20 feet plus or minus, but the elevation show it as at a whopping 48 feet, I think, which is uniquely tall for a three-story building. So I would encourage the applicant to reduce the overall height and modify the roof lines so that it isn't such a, so that the proportions are a bit more modest.
Well, just up the block, there's condos that right on Campbell Ave that probably be taller than us.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we created a higher ceiling for the commercial space because a lot of commercial tenants nowadays, they want 10, 11-foot ceilings. So the first story is a little higher, but the upper stories are just red standard nine-foot ceilings. And we, we created an eight-on-12 slope for the roof because, you know, it's in the northeast. So we're trying to shed the ice and snow away from the, from the building as best we can, so there is no leaks to deal with. So, yeah, the building, top of the roof is, is high, but the actual, you know, occupiable spaces, you know, at 25 feet to 34 feet. I mean, if you wanted us to take down the, this, the slope of the roof, we could look at that, sure. But, like I said, like, like a 10, 11-foot ceiling height on the commercial level is pretty ideal for attracting tenants. And then having nine-foot ceilings on the upper residential, which is pretty typical. And we, we want to respond a little bit about the site comments. The, the reason we put the building where, where it is now is because Nick Regioni was previously approved for this expansion phase. I forget, it was like in 2017. So he already has utilities located for this building here. So the location of the building kind of should be where it is. But your comments about bringing more landscaping in, I mean, we could always do that. It's just that I needed 28 parking spaces, but if we can reduce some parking, I could put in some islands with some more landscaping.
I, I think in general with the landscaping, there needs to be some sort of division enforced between the commercial, like Dunkin' Donuts next door. Just speaking as a person who would be looking for apartments, it, it would be more attractive if there was a stronger divide between your Dunkin' Donuts neighbor and your apartment building. Whether that's done through landscaping or not, I'm not sure, but I think, or, or some other screen wall along the, along the edge of the building or lot, I'm not sure, but it seems to me like they do all just exist in an asphalt sea. But maybe, maybe there are people out there that are fine with that.
Yeah, and keep in mind that the residential is like a second and third floor, so they would be actually above the Dunkin' Donuts?
Is, is, has any attention been paid to lighting? I'm not sure what the Dunkin' Donuts there does in terms of, you know, nighttime shut off for, for their lighting, but raises another good point.
They close at 5:00 PM, I guess.
Yeah, they're, they're open now, less hours. So they're, but the lights, I believe, stay on in that, in this section. Turn on a timer. Where, where do you have lights?
Um, no.
I, I have, this is Barb. I had one question. So your application says you have eight apartments. And, and then you have the three commercial spaces, and presumably some of the commercial spaces would be more during the day and the, the others more at night. Has anybody looked at whether you really need the full 28 spaces? You know, I mean, if you add the two together, you, you do, but.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at it. Yeah, because like you're saying, like, the residential spaces will be used after hours. The commercial spaces would be used during, you know, working hours. So there could be some trade-off there, I guess we could talk about. And then we could use some of these spaces for more green, green areas.
I don't have any suggestion, but if, if you might look at that, it might be worth it. And, and then my other comment is just, it, it does need landscaping. It, you don't want to screen, screen it because it's commercial space on the first floor, but you just need something to make it nice. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Where do the residential tenants enter the building?
Oh, the residential tenants will park in the back. There will be a entrance lobby here. Can you guys see my cursor?
Yes.
Yes.
So there'll be an entrance lobby with, with an elevator and a stair tower in the back. They'll have their own little, um, separate entrance. And there'll be separate entrances for the commercial portions. So ready?
Uh, this is, I'm just curious, will the tenants be, if there, are there two apartments on each floor? Or how's that going to work?
Yeah, four per floor.
Four per floor? Okay, so they, that's the apartments go across the tenant A, B, and C line on this picture?
Yeah, um, if you can watch, like, we essentially were quartering the building.
Okay.
So, you know, each apartment will take up one corner of the building above.
Gotcha.
So they have, they all will have two exterior walls, so they'll have plenty of windows. We won't have any in the middle that don't have any windows, if that's what you're asking.
And I assume there's some kind of hallway system so that the people in the front, if the back is the main entrance, the people in the front will, apartments will be able to get in there? There's a hallway? Okay.
There'll be an elevator lobby in the back that brings you up, and then there's a hallway that goes from here to here.
Okay.
The two front apartments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can you go back to the, the main rendering of the, of the building?
Yeah, let me go see here. This is, oh, sorry. This is a little different. I'm not used to Blue Beam yet.
Are those built-in screens or is that a suggested kind of thing? Or canopies, I mean.
Yeah, we have some canopies that will be like aluminum or steel frames with fabric awnings.
Okay.
So, um, you know, we like to, uh, we, we like to do this as like a little design piece, like for commercial, it not only provides shade, but it also just provides some, you know, like a nice architectural detail to the building.
Will they be able to put signage on the, on the awning?
I mean, I would think so. I mean, they, yeah, I don't know what the, the signage zoning is off the top of my head. They would have to, I'm sure, go back and get approval for that.
Okay. Or, or, you know, put a pile on. Somewhere. Um, just aesthetically speaking, I, I can live with the tall roof line, but I'm having a hard time with those side sort of dormers, the gables. It just looks too busy. It looks like a Burger King crown. I'm sorry.
So these, these over here, maybe?
Yeah.
Too much?
In my personal opinion, which, you know, is worth whatever. But when I first saw the, the picture, I was like, whoa, it's, it's a little busy for me, for my taste.
I, I would echo. I find the overall design a little busy between the colors and the number of, number of ridge lines on the roof. I was actually going to ask what the decision process was between, or in going with that roof shape.
Okay, well, I mean, we can take a look at that. I mean, we're not married to that roof or by any means. We're just trying to make it as interest, you know, make it interesting and not, not too plain, but maybe we took it too far.
Well, you know, you know, and we're trying to make this so people will come in too. So, you know, we have a Dunkin' Donuts next to us. We, we want to make the project work worthwhile and sustain itself. Like I said before, I was building it on spec, so I want to make sure that, you know, we, we get, we get tenants, we get families in here.
The rendering here also doesn't show any sidewalk around the building. There is none.
Um, yeah, there will be no sidewalk on this side. I know that. Yeah, we really don't have a whole lot of room on this site, so we have like a couple of feet of landscaping, I think. There's a sidewalk on the back right now only.
So to enter the commercial tenant spaces, is it also through that rear entrance or is it all through?
Through the rear. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is going to be predominantly like the driveline. These doors are only going to be e- emergency egress doors. Uh, because we're going to need two ways out of these spaces. So these will be used in emergency only, essentially. By employees, things like that, but the public entrances to the commercial space would be on the back. I could, let me just see if I could find that. Yeah, like back here.
Is, is, I'm not sure where the property lines are. You see in this rendering on the left side of the building, the lane, it's really the driveline around the building. Yeah, um, is there any potential maybe for pushing that driveline further towards D'Amelio's Liquor Store and the gas station? Or is it too close?
I think it's right on the line.
Okay. Yeah. I was going to say that might afford you some space to do like patio.
Yeah.
Or seating.
Testo's kitchens out there.
Or Testo's, yeah, it's not D'Amelio's. Yeah. Um, on the bottom of the sheet, there's compact spaces, it looks like.
Yeah.
Now, do compact spaces count the same way towards providing parking spaces? Is that included in your twenty eight required spaces?
It is. I have four of them that aren't quite nine by eighteen, the full size piece. So these are a little bit, these are a couple of feet smaller. So if I were to eliminate some of these spaces and add more green, I would probably take these out first.
I'm just thinking about other site features that would make it more, I don't know, appealing to residential units and to commercial tenants. And I'm, my mind keeps going to like a patio space and where to put it.
Yeah, I mean, we could put it right here. We could put one right here. We get rid of these two spaces, which are compact anyways, we could put a like outdoor patio right here. Then, then it depends on what goes in here. But if, uh, you know, if a restaurant use goes in here, it could be used for that. Or it could be used by the residences. I mean, I don't know if that's okay with you or not. Yeah.
So, uh, this is Barb. Uh, I just have another question on these parking spaces that are way in the front, right near the highway. How do you walk around to the back? It doesn't seem like there's any, um, I mean, it could, it's paved, but is there sidewalk?
I, there's no way really, there's no sidewalk right now, but because we were thinking that these would be like for employee parking, you know, for the, because you do have the back doors to the commercial spaces here. Um, that was, you know, these, these I needed to add on to get up to my twenty eight spaces. So, um, there's no place in the back I could fit anymore.
I, I just wondered how they get.
Yeah, so I was thinking it would be used by like, like the employees of the commercial spaces, um, if you go in the back door. It'll be overflow for customer, I guess, if it ever got to the point where all these spaces are taken.
You guys are trying to, uh, keep it possible to what? Add a drive through on that, on that east side there?
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you, if you didn't need to do that, you could slide the building five feet, six feet to the east and then run a sidewalks right up, right up the west side of that building. And that would provide a fantastic connection for pedestrians to be able to walk out to Campbell Avenue. And then I think one of the conditions of the year, your first project was to build sidewalk, from Testo's site through your entrance. And then I think a crosswalk across Campbell Avenue, because there's no sidewalk on your side of Campbell, past your site. It's all on the, uh, the south side.
We did the sidewalk. Yeah, I think it's, wait, we already put the sidewalk in.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand that. What I'm saying is the sidewalk that you put in, uh, if you, if you go from that sidewalk, uh, just straight up the west side of your, your, your proposed building. Um, if you go back down to your building, right on the left side of ten and A, right there, right there, create a connection. Yeah, but, but you're going to lose the, lose or possibly compromise your ability to get a drive through in there.
Yeah, because right now we have the drive through lane and we have an escape lane too. So that's kind of taking up a little space over here.
I, I think a selling point of the tenant for the bottom, you know, whoever occupies that will be a drive through, especially coming off of COVID now. Everyone's shifting to that.
Well, then you can, you can steal it from the sidewalk that's on the Dunkin' Donuts side then. Right, on the right side of Dunkin' Donuts, because the pedestrian connection's going to be more important for the residential units than it is for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, so, yeah, so you.
I mean, if you're trying to get, again, if, if what you're trying, the thing is, is if you live there and you, you exit out, which I'm assuming you exit out the back by those, uh, the ADA spaces.
Yes.
Yeah, how do I walk to Campbell? Right? That's the question, Roddy, or whoever asked the question.
That's, I thought, I thought Aaron, they're going to go, oh, grab a cup of coffee and then walk out. That's a way.
So he's saying we should move this sidewalk to this side.
I suppose, actually, you know what, you know what, now that I say that, no, I suppose the way you've got it is actually safer. Because if, if, if you are going to have a drive through there, people are going to whip in off of Campbell to make that one eighty hairpin to get into the, the queue to go to the drive through. And that's going to be a conflict with pedestrians there.
Maybe we could strike this.
Maybe just having, yeah, maybe just having a crosswalk there is a better.
So that they can get over to this sidewalk and then they can.
Yeah, yeah. And at least that way the pedestrians are crossing in an area where vehicles have fifty to seventy feet to, to, to see the pedestrian and react.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Barbara, is that, is that a?
That, that's better, yeah.
It's a connection. It's not, it's not, I, I, you know, it's, might not be the, the best, but I, there's, there's a couple of things, uh, compromises that have to be made with the, of this site plan, I think.
Well, and again, the, the drive through lane really complicates this site because you've already got Dunkin' Donuts where people are driving through on that side. And then thi- this is tight. There just has to be some, I, I, Aaron, I like your suggestion of how you could get a sidewalk in there. Just, so, I don't know.
Oh, of sliding the building, you mean, and eliminating or, or, well, possibly hampering the, the, the drive through.
Do you have any commercial tenants in mind or not this time?
For, for Anthony, uh, for the drive through or just in general?
Just in general for the ground floor.
We had a, we had an LOI with a karate place. And I don't know where, where that is right now, uh, but that was on the table. But, you know, obviously the, the time is of the essence, so they want. So, uh, but that, they did come along. So. That's what we have right now. It, it's kind of, you know, people can't visualize until you, till you start building something and then, then they, then they come. So that, that's where we're at. The places that make it there for forever. After we did the Dunkin', I thought that would go quicker than it hasn't, so. So we're at.
Are there any more commissioner comments?
Nothing else from me, Anthony.
Okay, well, in that case, so this is a, an unlisted action for Seeker. So we can, uh, we can make a determination on Seeker tonight. It sounds like based on all the comments and suggestions that have been made tonight, I'm guessing that the commissioners will probably want to see her revise site plan before voting for approval unless anyone feels differently.
I concur.
Yeah, I do too.
Um, so I'll, I'll leave that aspect of it to the applicant. I don't know if, you know, if you feel like based on the suggestions that you have tonight, that you feel comfortable coming back next month. We could adjourn, uh, this application to next month's agenda so that you're on the agenda for next month. Although we also do have the, um, the zoning code, so I don't know, um, Dash or Aaron, is there a reason we should avoid next month? Should we go further or what do you think?
All right, I'm sorry. Do, do you guys need any variances? The, the question for the applicant?
Um, the only thing that, I mean, to be, uh, the zone that it's in, uh, the only thing I'm not sure about is, uh, let's see here, we, we met the parking. And we met everything, we met the green space, we, we're still meeting green space, we're still meeting all that. Uh, building height, I think maybe.
I guess my, my thing would be you, you've received a comment this evening that, I think it was Barb, uh, you, you would, you had suggested that maybe they, they think about reducing some of their parking. Um, I think is what you had said.
Yes.
Because there's, there's.
Yeah.
Right, because there's, uh, um,
Just ate a.
Call it, uh, anyway, the, the, the uses are, uh,
Yeah, the compliment.
They don't, they don't coincide, right? The businesses are operating during the day when most of the, the tenants may not be there, um, although COVID, um, did kind of change that a little bit, but they, they, there may be an opportunity at least to bank some of the parking or something along those lines.
Correct.
Where the applicant could go back in later and do, do that parking if you wanted. Um, but if the applicant just wants to get a variance for parking, then they would add that to their list of variances. Um, but it might be worth, it might be worth, uh, having them come back to you guys to see the layout, um, so that you guys can sign off on that before they go and get their variances. Because whatever their variances are, they're going to be, they're going to be relatively minor. And if, if they've arrived at those variances based on your recommendations, for instance, if you're asking that they provide less parking for a reason, then that, that might be better, a better solution.
Right, so if we ask them to come back with a revised site plan with fewer parking spaces and then give it a conditional approval based on their getting the variances for those reduced spots, right?
Right.
So Aaron, here's another question that maybe you can help them with. If they have the drive through, then they don't need as much parking. So they've blown out of some of the site for this double lane.
I don't think our code allows for that, um.
I understand that, but, but then they don't need, if they, if we give them that, then they don't need quite as much. I don't know what in terms of, of parking. So right now they've got jammed in parking and the drive through, and they've already got the drive, drive through on the other one.
It at least suggests like it should, uh, it could support their case for the variances because.
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay.
If they feel like they've accommodated in that way.
So Aaron's plan sounds good then, or Anthony's plan sounds good too.
And then there were some comments on the architecture as well. Um, do you guys want to summarize? Maybe we should just summarize the, the, the comments and the changes that you guys are looking to have made before the next meeting. So there were some comments about the roof. Um, I don't think there were any comments about texture, color or anything like that, but it, it seemed to be mostly focused on the height and, uh, height of the building and the roof.
I made a comment about the, the busyness of the colors as well. Um, that's totally subjective thing. I, I would maybe encourage you to consider other than yellow, some other colors. Um, to me, that can start to look dated when it gets put against the blue and then like the octagonal window you had in there. Um, it just starts to, to me, look like it's from a different decade, but again, subjective. Um, and then for the roof line, the comment would be to consider, my comment would be, consider a hip roof for it.
Yeah, and I know both, uh, Roddy and Sarah made comments about having some additional landscaping to maybe, you know, make the, the site a little bit more visually attractive and possibly use that to, uh, maybe block out some of the space for the, the residential tenants. Which I would agree with, I mean, not specifically that it, that it needs to do that as far as, you know, creating any kind of separate residential space, but, uh, but certainly some more landscaping would be nice, so, um, I don't have specifics, but anything that the applicant might be able to add if they can, possibly by, you know, dropping a few parking spaces.
Uh, this is Barb. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm kind of questioning whether it's worth it to try and lower the roof because it doesn't, it does give the building a, a sense of being there because it's in the, so it's sort of in a one story area. And, and they mentioned the snow, you know, having the steep enough roof that the snow comes, comes off it and all. So I, I wasn't really that offended. I, I know what everybody's talking about, but it doesn't really, I don't care too much about that.
Well, if there aren't any other commissioner comments to guide the applicant in what they might come back with, um, I'll turn over to the secret determination. So, you know, understanding that the site plan might come back with some revisions, as long as the scope of the project overall remains the same in terms of, you know, the number of units. You know, roughly the orientation of the site plan and things like that. I think that we may have enough information now to make a secret determination if anybody, uh, wants to make that motion. If we do come back with a, a plan that's substantially different than what we based that determination on, we can, of course, always revisit it. So I, I'm not that concerned about making a determination kind of if we come and see something dramatically different at a future meeting.
I mean, I would agree. Uh, does anyone else feel like we, uh, need to discuss anything more about at least Seeker? Because if, if not, then I would make a motion about it. Is there anything else? Any of the other commissioners want to discuss about potential for adverse impacts?
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we make a, uh, negative declaration for this project.
As an unlisted action.
As an unlisted action. Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, moving to vote. Suzanne Spellon?
Yes.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Uh, so we have a negative declaration for secret purposes. Okay, and it sounded like everybody was on board with, uh, adjourning this rather than taking a, on site plan approval until we have a revised site plan. So, um, if everyone's in approval, um, do we need to vote on the adjournment? I'm forgetting. Yes, we do need to vote on the adjournment. Uh, so I'll, uh, let me ask the applicant again, because I didn't actually get an answer before. Would you like to be on the March agenda? Or do you think that that's enough time, given the comments that you got this evening?
Yeah, the next one please.
Next one please.
Okay, um, and that should be, uh, on the same date since we've got twenty eight days this month. That'll be March seventeenth.
Thank you.
So, uh, I move that we adjourn this to the March seventeenth.
It's the sixteenth.
Oh, sorry, sixteen. I'm thinking of tomorrow's date. Okay, um, when we do vote, Suzanne Spellon?
Yes.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, so this matter is adjourned to the March sixteenth, planning commission meeting. And, uh, do you need anything else? I mean, you can always follow up with city staff with any questions in the meantime, but were there any, any other comments or anything you need to clarification on from what we discussed tonight?
I'm good. Okay, no, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, uh, unless there's anything else, then I think we can move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right, hold this in favor. Man, I made all the right, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Dash, we're gonna miss you, man.
You're in very good hands. Thank you very much. All right, have a good night, everyone. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.